Going to call the meeting to order here at 6:02 PM. Does anybody have any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. If we do not have anyone from the public here to speak to us, so I'm going to assume that we do not have any public delegations either. And our order of new business here is follow up on comments and responses. So. We did hear back just this week from a number of different groups and commissions. And I just wanted to get you up to speed on those and walk you through what they said, what we've been able to kind of do. And what I was hoping we could talk about tonight, if that's okay. Water and wastewater, the Water and Sewer Commission got back to us. We had written that document very closely with Brad. So they didn't have any big changes of substance. They had some maps to update, which Gary has taken care of and a couple of wording changes, but nothing in terms of substance to the recommendations. With exception of one word that I think everybody's going to be okay with. There in the section that we say address sewage capacity and we had made the recommendation that that sewer not be tied to new residential developments. They recommended striking the word residential to leave it a little bit more open to the possibility of using new connections to new developments, period. So just wanted to get a pulse on that. I, I, I think that it's close enough to the existing recommendation that we're probably okay, but I wanted to make sure that we.
I'm clear. They want to strike the word residential, meaning they don't want to extend sewer to any residential or anywhere.
He had the word resi- yeah, so let me, let me read it. Well, yeah, I guess you're right. It's an, it's an, it's an expansion. So we, I'm going to read you exactly what we had and what they recommended and I can, I'm attempting a screen share here so you can see it too. There you go. Should be able to see the plan and we'll update the draft date. It looks like it's still thinking here. Sorry guys, I'm clicking away and.
I have it up on my screen if you want me.
Yeah, I'll stop share if you want to pull up yours.
Alright, so this is the start of the section.
Yep.
Was it in here or in the recommendations?
It is in the start of the section, but in the I believe it's in the sewage capacity area. And you know, I can pull up also while we're looking at this.
So figure eighteen is a map that I developed for Brad in lieu of the one we had. The idea was to take the actual well areas and just make them these hatch, blue hatch circles because we didn't want to pinpoint the exact well location. So somewhere in that circle is the well. Then you'll also see the stratified drift aquifer, which is the natural geologic formation. And then the APA, the offer protection area in conjunction with all of that. So I think that tells a good story and he was happy with that and it didn't.
Was the well exactly in the center of the circle?
I don't know. I'm not going to disclose it if I do. So that said, you know, I'm doing my nine one one protection there. This map was the other map. We had for the purposes of the statute change, here's our sewer shed district. And he just asked that we just show the sewer mains on it. Those are in brown. Anybody get that color? No. Bad joke.
That a poop joke, Gary?
That was a, yeah, emoji.
Thank you.
So then the other change, do you know?
Yeah, I have it. So it is in the recommendations. It's number six. So I, let me read how, so if you see six, there's kind of a statement and then four kind of sub options.
Yep.
Yep. So this incorporates the change, but I can read. So if you're looking at this, this incorporates his change. I'll read to you what it was.
Okay.
Work to reduce future demands on East Lime's limited sewage capacity. While new applications for sewer connections over twenty units or five thousand gallons a day must apply for allocation of capacity with the Water and Sewer Commission. Further measures should be considered such as a moratorium on service lines to new residential developments. So it's address instead of reduce. And where we have may warrant consideration, it used to say should be considered. So they've kind of lightened that language there and they, the commission had suggested to remove the word residential on item A there. So we can add it back in. I had accepted changes just in going through the document, but that was one that I wrote down that I wanted us to discuss tonight.
That seems reasonable to me. I have no objections.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Gary, I, I've always, not always, but I, I understand that moratoriums can be legally dangerous. You're getting into, you know, devaluation of someone's property. And I mean, certainly if there's a good reason moratorium on.
I mean, I know this was something that I, I know I pushed as a recommendation to be a residential thing versus commercial. Because what about new developments? That's too, in my opinion, too vague. That means we're not going to extend sewer to where it makes most sense in a new commercial development. That, so I'm not sure what that means in that context.
I'm comfortable with it as a menu of choices on these options to work to reduce future demands. But, and I'm comfortable leaving it as is with their removal of the word residential, simply because if we get to a situation where we do hit capacity, right? So yes, we would like to renegotiate our capacity issues, right? But the, there are a lot of things with our sewage treatment that are largely out of our control. If we were in a situation where we were hitting capacity and where we were either not able to get additional capacity or it would be extremely cost prohibitive, then I would want this line in there. If we needed to lean on it for legal reasons.
Well, I mean, again, it is, it's a measure that could be considered. Doesn't mean they have to do it.
Alright, alright.
But I would agree with Norm. Moratoriums are legally tricky.
And if we're also like, yeah, lightening the language as was just done, I think that that's better too.
So that reads correctly, the, the first part, work to reduce future demands?
Oh, um, address, address.
It was addressed before though, I think, Michelle.
Yeah, I changed it to reduce.
I had changed it. It was reduce. I had updated it to address.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it.
So they want address.
They want address and.
Why is it having the dotted lines underneath it? What's happening there? They're like, what is, what is this?
Undo?
Okay, okay.
I just want to check that.
That's the problem.
So, and also it looks like Gary, did you just change should be, they wanted may warrant consideration.
Oh, you had made the change.
So I didn't make the change. Yes.
I had, but so I had made the changes in anticipation of discussing the changes. But when I read it back, it probably sounded like.
Wait, what just happened? Where'd it go?
I, I kept hitting undo too many times.
You're like, I just deleted the whole, no, just kidding.
Bumped the page. So there we go. Work to redo.
I can go back to this if we don't.
Work to address future demands, may warrant consideration. Alright, we're good, right? Okay, so that's fine.
That is done. The rest of water and wastewater recommendations were very slight word changes or addition clarifications of things that we said, but did not change the tone or recommendations of the document. So I don't feel that we need to go over those in detail unless Gary, there was anything that we felt needed to.
No, I don't.
The other thing that I wanted to go through, if, if we can switch to me on the screen share is an email from the agricultural subcommittee. And I believe you should be seeing that now here from Mark Christensen earlier this week to myself and Kirk. Again, much of this is kind of administrative stuff, found, you know, a spelling error, which I think Don Danila had already caught for us in his thorough review. Page seventeen, this is the one that I really wanted to discuss. And under sustainable agricultural zone. Add a statement to create a three acre zone in the area east of Bridebrook Road, south of I ninety-five, west of Roxbury Road, north of Route one fifty-six. Also create a three acre zone north of Upper Patagonia Road. You can, you know, read that. I don't have to read out loud too. These are generally undeveloped areas and some areas are used for agriculture and are untaxed by East Lime. These lands are generally in a one acre zone, but can be developed in the future. And the town should put a standard more than one acre now. It has been mentioned for many years, but never acted upon. Even if mentioned in the P O C D and not acted, acted upon by zoning, it can still work to reduce density. Preserve agriculture and open space because a waiver for future development would be needed on these lands and must be in agreement with the P O C D.
This is very interesting recommendation.
I would say.
It seems like you've been quite specific about the places where it should be.
Right. And the fact that it's three acres, I don't know where that number comes from, but.
Well, isn't that what's, is three acres what's used over on? That was in Asakachi Hills?
It used to be. It, they took that away.
Oh, really? What is it now?
R, R one twenty.
But how many acres is that?
That's, that's three, three acres, yeah.
Oh, it is? Okay.
It's still there, okay.
Okay, good. Um, I think this is interesting. I'm not opposed to this. I I think this is interesting and zoning, yeah, how do you feel about this norm? Ultimately zoning would weigh in, but this is, you know, it is one of those like, yeah, it's a recommendation. What are your thoughts?
If, well, I worked for twenty years trying to get these conservation by design development regulations passed, which is all about clustering and then providing contiguous open space. With the three acre zone, it sort of defeats that purpose unless the zone is to promote farming.
Well, it would be a requirement of the sustainable agricultural zone as written in this recommendation.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm kind of thinking out loud, I mean. I think, I think farming should be in anywhere. And I, I don't know why, I don't see the reason why we need to zone it. Gary, I, I forgot, what's the requirement?
For?
For a farm, for a farm now, is it? Is it three?
Two acres? You can have livestock, you can have a horse?
Yeah. Anybody can grow strawberries even with one acre.
Yeah, there's right to farm laws. I mean, just as a side note, anybody could farm anywhere in Connecticut.
Right. I don't see what this is going to do.
I think it's gonna, if, if the farm is sold.
Right, yeah.
Except as a marketing tool, that we have a agricultural zone, I mean. I don't, I have to be convinced what it actually does for us.
Right now, they're undeveloped, they're not agricultural zones where they're having these hay fields. They're, or timber orchards. They're in a one acre zone. So if in the future, these undeveloped areas became developed, the density, I think the argument, if I'm interpreting it correctly, is that the density would be higher, you know, one acre zone density. And they're suggesting that to keep, to preserve the open space and agricultural uses of this land that they're already using. If we zone it now to a three acre zone, if it does get developed in the future, the density will be lower. Is that, am I interpreting it correctly?
I think that, that is how I am also interpreting it. I think that you explain that the way I understand it as well.
If that's the case, then that defeats the purpose of the C D D, C D D regulations, which encourage large parcels of open space. Nice open space, not wetlands and rocks. It's a.
But isn't the C D D required in any residential zone now for, of development?
Four, four units, four units or more.
Yeah.
Or ten acres or more.
Right. So.
Also the discretion for less than that, to apply those.
Right, right.
Yeah. So you'd still end up with the lower density housing. It's just that the houses would be closer together, right? I mean, because you can't put more houses than the zoning would allow anyway.
Yeah, exactly. Like if you had a bigger parcel of land, you'd be able to preserve more land within that three acre space. I think, right? Wouldn't you just be taking all of that, you know, condensed clustered development? Or I'm sorry if I just butchered that, but then just putting that into a, a smaller space within that larger three acres, won't this?
But, but if when you, if you have a three acre zone, that's not open space. Each individual homeowner owns three acres. And only he or she can enjoy it. And you can't have a co-op farm or whatever you want to do with that open space. I really think this is counter to what that regulation is trying to do.
But the percentages would still apply and in a nine, let's say it's a nine acre parcel, just for my level of math. You would end up with still the thirty percent or more open space and three homes instead of nine.
Yes. Right?
Yes, but you don't, well, okay, you have, you still have the open space requirement.
Right. The way I read and interpret this is this is making it well, preserve a greater land area.
Well, I think it being.
A fewer people to enjoy.
I mean, I.
Because it's eaten up by individual homeowners.
So is the zoning, I'm sorry, this might be ignorant question. In that area where you're requiring open space, that's publicly available open space? Cause I never.
It can go a lot of different ways. It just has to be permanent open space.
Okay.
Can be public, can be enjoyed by the, a homeowner's association, whatever they decide to do.
Okay.
Well, being that this is a suggestion or a recommendation, I mean, again, here you have an item seven is, it's suggesting to adopt a zone anyway. I mean, you could put this in as like an I E as an example, or we could just leave it. And when the zoning commission, if they ever take this up, you know, Mark could make the comment at a public hearing per se. I mean, I don't know what you want to do with that. I mean, clearly there's a desire there to have a less density if it gets developed, the land. And I think no matter what you do in that case, it's not conserving farmland. You're still building it out. The only thing you conserve was thirty percent of the open space.
I'm comfortable with it as an I E. That's a good.
That's a compromise.
If it's in the plan, what I'm afraid of, if it's in the plan of development, that's a lot of ammunition to, for somebody to say, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna use a C D D regulation. I'll go with the agricultural zone.
But can't we require them to?
Well, I think the zone would have to be adopted first.
But if there's a separate zone, we can't require it to, we can't require them to.
Well, if you, if you added an agricultural zone, like you had the R forty district and it had its own district, any lands within that district, once subdivided would have to meet, in my opinion, the C D D regs. It's the division of any land in town. So whether you're in Crescent Beach, Black Point, or it's just a new Black Point, that with the association, with those associations have their own zoning districts. They're subject to our subdivision regs.
Yeah.
Regardless.
If that could be a caveat in this regulation that it's clear that it shall follow the C D D regulations, then sure. That further reduces the number of houses that are going to be built.
Right.
As long as it doesn't conflict with that, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll work to add that. If everybody, Rich, Kirk?
Yeah, I agree.
Alright. Last one here. So the other agricultural notes were
Those are pretty small, right?
Suggesting adding farm stands under additional permitted agricultural uses. That to me seemed in line with what we were saying and just kind of an omission on our part, not saying the words farm stand. But I don't know if there's a history behind that use. Okay, I'm gonna go with, okay. Um, the final one here, I will screen share from the Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources. They had two recommendations here. These are the recommendations and let me, I wonder if I can split screen with where they are in the document. Going to page fifty-eight and fifty-nine. Six twenty-six, guys, I'm sorry.
No, you're doing good. We're on the last one. We're good. Norm may be able to have dinner tonight in between the meetings.
They already had dinner.
Good. Early dinner.
It looks like they may have an outdated, or the page number has changed. Okay. So they're looking at these two recommendations. Consider additional protections in residential development areas near watershed and aquifer recharge areas to ensure future development has minimal impact to the watershed or aquifer and improve the resiliency of existing and, this can't be right. Oh, that is right. Yeah. So this is what reads now. The bold is what they would like to add. So it's adding priority areas. And the reason that I wanted to talk about it as a group was because I wanted to understand if that strengthens the recommendation or protection or weakens it.
Really good question. Yeah, specificity. Yeah, that's a good. What do you think?
My, my number six, I mean, one expanding wetlands, I'm questioning that, but adjacent to Patagonia Marsh, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's very specific in location, as is the other. I mean, I get highest priority should be placed on maintaining undeveloped woodlands. They identify Powers Lake and Stones Ranch. I mean, certainly you can say it doesn't hurt.
When you, when you specify a location, that helps if, if a zoning board is gonna deny
Okay.
In a affordable housing project. One of the reason, one of the legitimate reasons it can be denied is if certain, the parcel has been designated as future open space. And by naming something that will give the zoning board some ammunition to deny. So it, it, it would, it does help.
Okay, that's really helpful feedback, especially if the conservation committee, you know, I'm sure they've done their research to figure out the areas that should be a priority. So then I think it does make sense to have this level of specificity.
Do you, do you think that it would be useful to add like a such as, such as Powers Lake and, or areas? You know, if, if on, on number five, you say highest priority should be maintaining undeveloped woodlands, such as.
Yeah.
Because in that case, you would get both. You would get all, all undeveloped lands and those areas around Powers Lake and Stone Ranch. Likewise with the other one.
If you use the words, in my opinion, I'm not an attorney, but if you use the words such as, you take away the designation.
Oh, interesting.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
If you eliminate those words, we are pointing to these spots as designating these as hopefully open space.
Let's just leave it to how they said it then.
Okay.
Right? I think.
Well, again, on, on number six, I also question placed on maintaining expanding wetlands adjacent to Patagonia Marsh.
How do you expand wetlands?
When you look at the, the recommendation itself, it's for residency of existing and future resident by adopting zoning regs for a hundred year stormwater collection, retention and quality, that stormwater management. So I'm not sure how expanding the wetlands there, that might be another recommendation all in of itself.
Right. And we do go into that because we have the Salt Marsh Plan, this, which I think actually has parcels right in that Patagonia Marsh.
Wait, I have a question. Sorry. To go back to five, just for a quick second, did we edit that one partially or no? What was their language? I'm sorry. I just wanted to.
I was loading this word, but we can, we can remove that.
I like the, I like the particularly, particularly those. I think, I think those are good words.
Okay, cool. Let's keep it like that then. I just didn't want to lose that because we had to sort of left that hanging. Okay.
So for six, if the intent here is to protect the marsh around Patagonia Lake, I would just use the same language they did above. And say, here's the, here's the key area that we're interested in protecting.
So particularly those adjacent to Patagonia Marsh. Alright, sure.
Right here.
On.
Add it here.
Protecting, no, on the, on number six, you're gonna, what they want to do is you want to protect the wetlands at Patagonia Lake by improving the stormwater management. I think what is trying to be said there.
Okay, so that would be a separate one though, because we do want to.
On all development.
Yeah.
So do we want to say highest priority of?
So, um, why don't you say just improve, I don't know, improve water quality, but you say work, work to improve water quality and.
By maintaining and expanding, work to improve water quality by maintaining and expanding wetlands. Particularly those surrounding, or those adjacent, sorry, to Patagonic Marsh. Yeah?
Or I would say Lake, Lake Patagonic.
Oh, I thought that they were talking about Patagonic River Marsh.
That's what it is.
Yeah. The salt marsh.
Did it refer to the salt? Okay.
Yeah.
But this is in residential development. And this recommendation, as we have written it by pulling it out, is not a residential development recommendation.
So should it be in another location? In stormwater management perhaps?
I think.
Or where?
Watershed, it is the Patagonic River watershed and we can throw that sentence after here. Highest priority should be placed on maintaining and maintaining and expanding. I'll say particularly.
Okay. Wait, let's, let's, uh, I have a shortage of place on maintaining undeveloped ones, particularly those surrounding Patagonic. Uh, I would maybe just break it up into two things and Stone Ranch dot additionally work should be done to maintain and expand, I don't know, something like that, maybe, I don't know. It just seems a little long right now.
I think the fact that you call out Powers Lake and in light of what the inland wetland agency is currently considering. I would also identify Patagonic Lake and Gordon Pond, but there's not a whole lot of wooded areas around Gordon Pond, but.
Does, does anybody call it Stones Ranch anymore?
Yes, apostrophe, yes, it should be.
It was a guy.
I think, oh, Patagonic needs an S after the N.
Yep, thank you.
No problem. Um, and maintaining expanding, who is the decision?
Maybe we should add Bride Lake.
Yeah, I was gonna say Bride Lake, Jesus, yeah.
And even Dodge Pond, because there's a well down here, you know, and if we're kind of thinking in those terms.
Bride Lake is really important.
Dodge Pond also, yeah, Dodge Pond has tremendous amount of forest land there.
Wait a minute, there's, let's get rid of one of those extra ands too. Let's get rid of the and after the lake, the Patagonic Lake, and then just turn that into, uh, because we have Stones Ranch after that. Okay, cool. Is there anything else that we're forgetting?
Darrow Pond, I mean, but you got conservation easement to the south of it and minus the ham fill houses that have been built out, but. I mean, I guess it would apply to that, you know, those homeowners, we don't want them clearing their backyards up to the pond. Then there's a few large unnamed water body, unnamed water bodies to the west of Whistle Town Road. I mean, and it's all owned by either Yale or the state. Actually, I think it's Yale and yeah, part of the Stones Ranch, so I don't know what we do with those, but we should try to track down their names or not, but.
These are the. Okay.
These, these are the primary ones in town.
The big ones. Yeah.
It's surrounding the Yale property. The way that we're sort of talking about surrounding Stones Ranch.
Yes. Surrounding the, yeah, the, particularly those surrounding Powers Lake, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, I think that sounds good.
I assume somewhere in these, this document, there's mention of the Uswagachi Hills.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I feel like we just leave that one out. No, I know, no, maybe should we put that in there as well, or?
It's in the base table too, Norm.
Okay.
Do we want to put that in here? Because that could be another place to put that? Why not? Great, I feel like that is, uh, pretty sufficiently specific and is covering most of the key water bodies.
Yeah, and then I'm comfortable just having moved that line from six into five, I can copy paste this into the document.
Cool, thanks, Michelle.
Um, those were the three things that I wanted to get through and I think Gary, um, just had a note on the addition of sea level rise um, information into the plan as required.
Yeah, so, um, I guess if I can go back and share.
You know, can I, can I backtrack a little bit? I just, uh, some of these things maybe don't have anything to do with the aquifer. Some of these locations that we mentioned, and it was addressing the aquifer areas.
It's addressing watersheds and aquifer recharge areas. This lives in residential development.
Okay, alright, yep, okay.
Good call, though.
Let's see, so I'll go back, what I, I ended up doing is I put basically cut and paste the entire StanTech report into Drive. Um, it was kind of a pain, but, so all the text is there where we can kind of cut and paste it. I really just, I mean, I don't want to put the whole report into make it a chapter in the P O C D, that'd be ridiculous. Uh, but it's what, and I didn't have a chance today to get what I thought were the most pertinent sections out and into the document. We do refer to the document in a number of recommendations.
And I think it's an appendix item as well.
It will be an appendix and that, that was, so I'm not certain what we should do there.
Any NOAA maps or Circa information?
Well, I, I went to go pursue that Circa stuff and, uh, they weren't of much help. Basically Bruce Hyde said, can you extract anything from the report that StanTech did? So there are maps within that document.
Okay.
It should be in my drive, active. I can open it. So the screen in front of you, that's the, that's closing. That's the spreadsheet. I just finished all the recommendations today. We've got to X the boxes. Um, but while that closes, here's the StanTech report. So here's the table of contents, I guess, for, for quick review. And they put all their maps and figures in, in section five. So these priority projects, those were recommendations. Um, I didn't go, shoot. I'll still tell this scroll down. So they have this community resilience toolbox, uh, which was a suggestion. Uh, and then here's all their discussion on implementation. So we, we talked about wave height, what it is, and give an explanation of all of that. I don't know that that's really applicable because we can, we reference this document. But under priority projects, somehow getting these.
Those are in.
Those are in.
Yeah. I think what we might need is these maps of hurricane surge FEMA flood zones and FEMA flood zones and structures impacted by 24 inches of sea level rise.
So here was one map they provided, it kind of, we already have this kind of somewhat in the plan already in different forms. Uh, shows you the FEMA flood zone A zones in particular and the can't read that final.
Adopted aquifer protected area.
Um. Figure six, surface and groundwater, I'm not sure, I think the label was to get. The figure that I just showed you was figure six. This was agricultural land. Land, this was existing land use. That might be helpful. So we have figured out 11.
That's one.
This one.
Hurricane surge.
We can incorporate that one. Uh, the following one, which is FEMA flood zones. And then this one's a little more specific, it's the flooded zones impacted, uh, by 24 inches of sea level rise. Thought that was a good one.
Yeah, I think all three of those are good.
Um, there's also a map of priority projects and critical infrastructure. I don't know if we want to include those.
Um.
And evacuation routes. Those are the last two.
The requirement is to show sea level rise, right? That's, that's.
I think this map here does that.
Yeah. Um. I would agree, and I think it can go in coastal resources, because that's where we talk about most of this resiliency stuff, but with the whole thing attached and with the number of places that we reference, the priority projects, um, elsewhere, I think, um, I think we're, we're okay. But I don't know what the legal requirement is.
Well, we'll find out if OPM has an issue with it. Uh, I'm just kind of going off of the letter we got from deep. And while our town attorney's looked at it and said, you know, we don't have to necessarily address their comments per se. My, my suspicion would be that they'd be shared with OPM. You know, so, uh, that being said, uh, and not that OPM would, I guess they could reject it, I doubt that they would. They would probably look, ask us to make modifications or revisions if it was grossly in error. So I, you know, and with the town attorney having looked at it, I'm, I'm comfortable saying that we address all, all the concerns that OPM would have, um, as they look at the statute. I think if we can put these in coastal resources somewhere, if the ones, you know, I'm born with that, then let's, let's do that. Um, not exactly sure what we'll, I'll stop sharing, say about them, but um, we can find a home for them. Sound good? I'll work on that tonight.
Perfect.
Great. The other item I wanted to just run by everyone is I had Jen, uh, put together a list of appendices and references. I don't know if that's something that we wanted to go over, you know, what should be an appendix versus a reference.
It looked, I wanted to talk to you guys about that separately because it looked like some of the references got cut off. And the references, the, I think we're missing some documents in that new list she sent today.
Okay. Uh, because we did take out some of the old documents that were in the previous plan.
Yeah.
Seven community survey.
Yeah, the references, that the reference list that accompanied the original draft took the references from each section.
Okay, was that, Jen said you had sent that to her and it, or said something to her in a separate email. And I read one that I was CC'd on, so that's what I was thinking, but I guess after we read your email.
I'm not sure, there's references in the existing plan.
So you want to pull all of those out and just list them?
They're already listed.
They are.
Uh, they were.
On a separate, like on a separate.
Oh, they're in there, here, let me show you. This is the draft right now, these are the last few pages of it.
Yeah, so throughout the whole document, these references are there.
Yes, and also in a complete list at the end of the document.
All the references made throughout the whole document are on a.
Are this list in the document.
On the very end.
They appear in each section and then as a complete list here in the last three or four pages of the document.
Okay, so those last three or four pages.
And I don't know what this town of Eastland thing was. But it is, it's the last few pages of our current draft.
Okay, so we'll go through that.
Okay.
And whatever I have on, on this list that we generated today, I will most likely add if it's not there. Yeah.
Okay.
If anybody has any problems with that, I'll, I'll let you know, but I think most of it's there, um. I don't know that we dug through these documents, but I think we, we touch on them in one way or another, so, alright. Alright, we'll get that done tomorrow and hopefully by Friday, worst case scenario, sometime Monday, the document will be revised and up on the web. Um, the requirement is at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. I'm hoping to have it up there by Friday.
Okay.
So.
And the current one's up there.
The current one's up there, the.
Three point oh.
My, my big question is this matrix now, obviously in a digital format, doesn't matter how big it is. In a hard copy format, we got to kind of figure out how to get it into, fit into this document. Um, that's my only worry. Jen's gonna work on that tomorrow, she said, or she's off tomorrow, Monday. So if you have any ideas or you're familiar with formatting, yeah, let me know, because we can probably use your help getting it into this scenario. She, she wants to take the entire Google Doc and PDF, the whole thing. Um, just for the sake of ease, uh, so we're gonna try to get that together and maybe through using Adobe. We can cut and paste pages in and out. I'm not sure what to do with it, we'll see, I mean, it's massive, it's a massive, it's 400 lines of recommendations. Now I thought, because each recommendation we have, it was, now reading through it, I, I might have shortened this up. I mean, you, there's an, there's like a recommendation in some sections, and then there's all this description below it.
Yeah.
I, I kept it in most places where it was very lengthy, I just said, what's the actual recommendation? I just left that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what's the best thing to do. It, it got to a point where just cutting and pasting was easier.
Yep. I, I know exactly how I feel because this, this is where all my starts and stops kind of led to.
Um, so I, I think at this point, though, it's easy enough to go through and just check boxes and you know, I think I, if anybody's ambitious, feel free, but we'll work on that as well and get that done tomorrow. It's all I have.
Okay. Well, thank you all. Um, I think this wraps us up, so see you on Tuesday for our big public hearing.
That's gonna be fun.
Great.
That's a Zoom meeting also?
Yes, it's the regular planning commission meeting to decide.
Can you send me an invitation to that?
Oh, yeah, me too.
Yep.
Gary, you want to take a note to have Jen uh, forward the me- Gary, do you want to take a note to have Jen forward the meeting, meeting invitation? I'll try to remember to send it to you also.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with the journey?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you all very much for your time. I really appreciate this extra last meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.
Have a good night. Bye.